Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Birmingham City Council for August 31st, 2021 at 9:30 a.m. Before we have the invocation by Council Hilliard, I just want to take a moment. My thoughts and prayers are with Council Woods and his family and their time of need. So we just ask everyone to please uplift the Woods family at this time. So, Council Hilliard, I'm sure you'll, in your prayer, you will extend that. But we're going to ask Council Hilliard to do our invocation and Council Williams to do our Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning to the council. Good morning to the city of Birmingham. May we stand. Gracious Father, we are so thankful, Father God, for all the things that you're doing for us, Father God. Father God, we thank you for the rain, Father God, and the fresh air. We thank you for life, Father God. Father God, we thank you for the life of Mrs. Woods, Father God, Clinton Woods' mother, Father God. Uplift the family, Father God, but let's celebrate the wonderful life that she has led, Father God, to touch her family, to touch her city, and to touch everybody around us. Father God, we ask you, Father God, to continue to bless us as we walk the path each day, doing the things, Father God, that you want us to do. Father God, let's each and every one of us touch someone, change a life, Father God, and celebrate such a wonderful life. Father God, we know over the world, Father God, there are many issues, there are many problems, but we know you are the Father of all, Father God. You are the lover of all, Father God. Father God, we ask you to touch each and every one of us, give us strength, give us power, Father God, and ask that we may spread love among each and every one of us. This we ask, in Jesus' name. Let's all say, "Amen."
I'm well, thank you. Councilmember Abbott.
Good morning.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Good morning.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Good morning.
Councilmember Quinn.
Good morning.
Councilmember Smithman.
Good morning.
Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Councilmember Wood. Council President Protem Alexander. And Council President Parker.
Good morning. Good morning. The minutes are not ready for May 4th through August 24th, 2021. Morning, Chief. Morning, how are you?
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, members of the council. Good morning, members of the public. Mr. President, on behalf of the mayor and the city of Birmingham, I'd like to join with the council in expressing our condolences to the Woods family and their passing of his mother, Ms. Cassandra Woods. Our thoughts and prayers are with them, and we ask the entire city of Birmingham to keep the Woods family lifted up. The mayor would also like to express condolences on the passing of former BJCTA Executive Director, Ms. Ann August, former Birmingham Police Department employee and community leader, Ms. Angela Skoggins, and also local poet and community innovator, Brian Voice Porter Hawkins. They all made an impact on the Magic City, and they will be missed. Our thoughts and prayers are with every one of these individuals and all they touched. Also, our hearts and minds are with those who were in the path of Hurricane Ida on yesterday, and it continues today. Remnants of the storm made its way through the city of Birmingham, and we're fortunate that our city crews are always ready to step in and to assist wherever is needed. As always, we want to remind residents to remain weather aware, as severe weather is still in the forecast for Birmingham today. If residents have an outage at home, see the streetlights are out, or they need to get an update on outages in their community, they should call 1-800-888-2726. It's available 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. Another number of note is the residential customer service number, and that is 1-800-245-2244. Finally, Mr. President, members of the council and public, we'd like to welcome Tulane University's football team to Birmingham as they practice at Legion Field this week for their game against Oklahoma. They moved their practice here because their stadium was unavailable for practice due to the storm. UAB is assisting by providing staff to help during this time. Mr. President, members of the council, that concludes the mayor's report.
Thank you, Chief. Move to the consent agenda. Adam Cork.
Yes, sir. The consent agenda begins on page 3. No, I'm sorry, page 2, with item number 3. On page 3, items 4 and 5. We move over to page 13, items 6, 7, and 8. Page 14, items 9, 10, and 11. Page 15, items 12, 13, and 14. Page 16, items 15, 16, and 17. Page 17, items 18, 19, and 20. Page 18, items 21, 22, and 23. Page 19, items 24, 25, and 26. Page 20, items 27, 28, and 29. Page 21, items 30, 31, 32, and 33. On item 33, on the third line from the bottom, it should read Library Services Technology Act, LSTA, instead of LSAT. It should be LSTA. Page 22, items 34, 35, 36. And on 36, that should be $5,500 from District 1 instead of District 7. It's coming from District 1. Okay, then we go over to page 23, item 39. Page 24, items 40, 41, and 42. On page 25, items 43 and 44. And a correction on item 43, it's just recommended by the mayor and Budget and Finance Committee. And please note, item 45 is being requested to be withdrawn by the mayor's office. Then we go over to page 26, items 46, 47, 48, and 49. All right, page 27, items 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, and 55. Page 28, items 56, 57, 58, 59, 60, and 61. Page 30, item 66, 67, and 68. And that concludes the consent agenda, and you do have two addendum items.
Okay. I'm going to start. Council Williams will work our way around.
Yeah, we said that item 45 has been withdrawn. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, then can we add item 70 to consent, please?
Okay. Okay. Counsel. President Protem.
I'm good, thank you.
Dr. Quinn. What about we're on our... Counselor Abbott, Counselor Hoyt.
Yes, I'd like to remove on page 29, item 62, from consent.
Off of consent.
That's all, thank you.
Counselor Hoyt, you...
Moving, that's on page 3. Item 48. That's on page 26. Item 23. I mean, 41.
You good? Okay, we can, let's... Let me read, "All items designated as consent or routine and non-controversial will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, citizen, interested in a public hearing is a request. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced."
Still moved?
Second. Okay. Everyone voted aye?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, consent agenda passes, first item number.
Okay, the first item is item number 1 on page 2. An ordinance to further amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham. Case number ZAC 2020-00036, to change zone district boundaries from O&amp;I Office and Institutional District to QC2 Qualified General Commercial District in order to construct new multiple-family apartment units filed by Robert A. McCain, representing the owner HCP Mid-City LLC for the property located at 1110 Beacon Parkway East and situated in the southeast quarter of Section 11 Township 18 South Range 3 West. And this is the hearing of all interested parties. So we need a motion.
Good morning. How are you doing?
Good morning. Katrina Thomas, I serve as interim deputy director in the Department of Planning, Engineering, and Permits. Item number 1 is case ZAC 2020, case number 36. This is an application to change zone district boundaries from O&amp;I, which is Office and Institutional District, to QC2, which is Qualified General Commercial District in order to construct new multiple-family apartment units. This application was filed by Robert McMcConne, representing the owner, HCP Mid-City LLC, for a property located at 1110 Beacon Parkway East. The subject property is approximately 23 and 1/2 acres. It is currently zoned O&amp;I. And to the north of the property, its properties are R3 Single Family District. To the south, it's currently zoned R6, which is Multiple Family District. And to the east, it's property containing the Mountain Woods Apartments, which is zoned R7. To the west of the location, it's zoned O&amp;I, which is Office and Institutional District. The proposed Beacon Park Apartments will be a single, multiple-family building, four stories high. It's approximately 60 feet in height, and it will contain a mix of studio, 1 and 2 and 3 bedroom apartment units. There would be approximately 259 total units in the complex. The building will also include amenities, such as a parking lot, parking garage, and the apartment building will be constructed on the peak of the hill to provide sweeping panoramic views of the city skyline to the north. The city's long-range land use plan for this property is general commercial, therefore the proposed rezoning is consistent with the land use plan. The applicant's proposed site plan shows that 320 parking spaces will be required, and this is the minimum number of parking spaces for the total number of units that will be constructed. The city's stormwater staff recommends that any new construction or redevelopment will have to comply with the city's post-construction ordinance and also the zoning parking requirements. There was a post-construction drainage plan submitted for this property, and according to that plan, the post-runoff will be less than the pre-runoff. There will also be a requirement for SEC Sole Erosion Control permits and Civil Construction permits. The Birmingham Department of Transportation stated that all driveways, sidewalk, and permits will be required. All new construction or redevelopment must comply with BDOT's requirements. There was a traffic impact study submitted by the developer, and our BDOT team concurs with its findings of no improvements necessary. The landscaping requirements of the ordinance will also have to be met and will be submitted at the time of permitting. The city's engineer reviewed the geotechnical report and concluded that the recommendations of the report are sound and that we need to make sure that the designer and contractor adhere to the recommendations. Field slopes on the north side of the crest will be difficult to stabilize since the existing slope is unstable material and already exceeds the recommended 2-to-1 slope. We need to require that the existing material is benched prior to placing field. We also need to make sure that drainage is handled in a manner that is not going to have concentrated flows directed at the walking trail and residential properties below. The Glen Iris Executive Committee Association held a meeting on January 15th to review this request. They had several questions, and so they continued corresponding with the applicant to have those questions answered. They met again on February 18th of this year to answer additional questions and discuss the project. They ended up having a special call meeting on April 12th in which they did not recommend approval. That vote was 4 to approve, 47 to deny the request, and 4 abstained. The property is located in the north side/South Side Framework Plan area, and the framework plan area is in progress, therefore implementation committee has not been formed. The applicant's request is consistent with the future land use plan, and staff does recommend approval with the following Q conditions. One, that the developer must maintain a clearing limit as depicted on the site plan. And two, that no building permit shall be issued without first subdividing the property and combining it into one lot. The zoning advisory committee met at its regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday, May 18th, to review this application and recommended approval with the same Q conditions that were recommended by staff. The planning and zoning committee met on Wednesday, July 21st, and they voted to send this case to the full council without a recommendation. I do want to add that we did receive several email and mail correspondences from the Watford subdivision, which is located just south of this property. There were approximately seven letters that were sent in opposition prior to the ZAC meeting. Those letters expressed concerns with decreased property values, increased noise, increased foot traffic, increased vehicular traffic, debris and dust during constructions, stormwater runoff, potential landslides, decrease of quality of life, concerns over the safety of school bus stop with increased density, and concerns that the neighbors were not initially notified. Most of this community is outside of the 500-foot mandate for mailing notices to adjacent property owners, but we did send notices to all of the Watford community residents, well, property owners, prior to this meeting and the ZAC meeting. There were also other residents who emailed us concerns, so I just wanted to add that to the record. And that concludes our report.
Mr. Applicant, here.
How are you doing? Good morning.
Good morning. Randall Minor, 1901 Sixth Avenue North, here on behalf of the applicant. Here with us today, we've got a full assortment of the project team. So the application was filed by the project civil, Bob McCann. He's here from Atlanta. We have Ryan Bork, who's the developer with Rise Development. We also have Grant Kersey, who's the project architect, and we have Jason Avery, who's the geotech. And if you will indulge me a little bit, I'd like for Ryan to come up and just talk a little bit about the project, what attracted them, about this location. And then after Ryan speaks, then, you know, I thought Ms. Thomas did a great job, as usual, outlining the zoning issues, but you didn't hear as much about the design. So I'd like for the project architect, Grant Kersey, to talk about design. And then, again, we have the full project team to answer any questions. A lot of the issues that Ms. Thomas addressed, we've already addressed in different forums with the neighborhood, but again, you guys may not have heard that, so we wanted to make sure that any questions that you guys had, we had the full team available for that. So, Ryan, if you can go up, unless there's something for me.
Ryan Bork, Atlanta, Georgia. I'm the representative for the developer, Rise Real Estate. Can you hear me?
Yeah, if you can hear us a little bit, talk a little bit louder, because you're within the...
In the...
Yeah, it has echoes, so...
Gotcha.
Okay, that's much better.
Very good. Again, Ryan Bork, Rise Development. We're the developer doing the project on Beacon Parkway. We've been a longtime fan of Birmingham. We've been looking for property in and around the Birmingham area to construct a multifamily. We're very, very much fans of the Homewood area. There's a great need, housing need, in this area. It's mostly single-family, small ranch houses. The development that's taken place there in the past couple of years has been done with great success. The Hills, East Borough, there's not a lot of multifamily in the area, but there's a lot of demand for living in the area because of the amenities that it has. Both schools and the downtown area is a quaint little area for after-work gathering, restaurants, and the like. Trying to find property there to redevelop has been very hard. We've been looking for over three or four years, specifically here. And when this property came available on Beacon Parkway and its connectivity, both via Valley and Oxmore, we thought this was a great opportunity to add to the housing here in the Birmingham neighborhoods. We know that it'll also attract and retain a younger generation of residents that are looking for modern apartment amenities, more so than, you know, historically older generations that want to, you know, live in houses. There's a great need for apartment dwelling, more authorities going through a renovation right now to bring their housing up to modern amenity levels, and they were just completed in 2016. And there are other apartments in the neighborhood that are also going through renovations to stay competitive. So with our offering in here, as well as the existing, we see the apartment community really benefiting.
Okay. How many? More, because I wanted to see if we just need to hear the entire presentation. I know there's some questions, and I guess we can just come back. If everyone could just hold their questions until the full presentation.
Just one more, just the project.
My name is Grant Kersey. I'm with Joel Design Studio in Atlanta, Georgia. We are the architect for this project. Our motto at Joel is radically polished, and I think that as part of that, we don't do anything that is anything but the highest class. And that's part of why we're working here in Homewood in Birmingham, and that's why we continue work with Rise Residential. If you know the site, we're up on a, we are up on a hill. It's a highly wooded area, and it's an old mining site. And part of this, we wanted to pay homage to these, to this natural beauty that was on the site, using all natural materials, real stone, and then taking that look, and also in this main courtyard, what you see on the bottom left here, not only using natural materials on the building, but also on the ground, part of the landscape, making sure this was a project of the highest class. And then, understanding that this important hilltop, also having the important views, which is on the backside of the building, we're big, we are big on community, not only at Joel, but at Rise as well. And so having community in all areas of this building, starting at this entry courtyard that you see, and then we, the part of the design we did was having pocket communities as well. So the back pool area, which is a very large pool area with multiple community areas within the pool courtyard itself, and then also taking, again, into consideration that we're close to Vol Control, and then having a connection to that as well. And then, once you go inside the building, we're also very thoughtful about units, about unit retention, about having people enjoy their experience here on site. And so we have large units here. And in a post, and we're still in COVID, but in a COVID slash post-COVID world, we're very thoughtful about the design of units, about people being able to live in them, work in them. And so in every unit, there's room for work from home space, and also, we are, there's a big trend in architecture to go towards micro-units, and I'm glad we're not doing any sort of thought on that here, because the thought is, we want this to be a community. We want people to live here for as long as they feel comfortable, and we're designing the units in that way. And then, we have a large amount of finestration, as you see, on all sides of the building because of the views and being on a hilltop. And then, if anyone has any questions about the design, I'd love to answer them.
Yeah, we're going to go, hold on, we're going to go Counsel Hilliard first, then Counsel Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chair in economic development and being able to see such great growth, and something that a lot of thought has gone into it. I've had the opportunity to talk to the developer and all of the other people in presenting this project. It's wonderful to see that the economic growth of Birmingham is still growing. So I like the project. I like what you said you're trying to do and put in place. I welcome all great development to Birmingham, and thank you for what you've been doing. Thanks a lot. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Williams.
Thank you, Madam Protem. To the entire development team, I heard the great things about the city of Homewood six times in y'all's presentation. You are in Birmingham City Hall and not Homewood City Hall. So if you have a development to come before us, please know at least what city you're in and what council you're in front of. That's all I have.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. And I wanted to ask Ms. Abbott, I heard the vote by the neighborhood. What my concern was, I did hear about stormwater, and there may be some runoff, and I know that in the past few weeks, the city, we've really had some difficulty in how we manage that, so I just wanted to hear more. I don't know if that would be from the city side or the developer side. How are you going to ensure... How are you gonna ensure that, that is taken care of? Did you have certain Q conditions that were gonna address that, or how is that being addressed?
Counselor, I'll, I'll have Bob McCann, who's the project civil, respond to that, and obviously, there's somebody from the city that wants to speak to it, they can do that as well.
Good morning, I'm Bob McCann with Haynes Gibson Associates, 1550 North Brown Road, Lawrenceville, Georgia. Yes, we've designed the stormwater system so that there will definitely be no additional stormwater runoff in the post-developed condition from the pre-developed. We have a large detention pond situated on the site as part of the design. It will discharge in two directions, basically, and we're reducing that flow with that detention pond. Also, we have an underground detention system to not only control the water quantity, but also the quality of the water, trying to infiltrate stormwater back into the ground, which will also help reduce the runoff from the site.
Thank you, a small question, thank you.
Counselor, Abbott, do you have anything to add to that issue specifically? I know.
The issue of stormwater, or the issue of the whole thing?
I, I was just asking about the stormboard. I, I know about the whole thing, I was just asking anything on the stormboard.
Okay, well, I think it would be a good idea if they showed us a site plan, because the pictures are real pretty, but I don't even think that's our development, because our development's not built yet. So I think that people probably, especially the folks from Rockford, would like to see the site development plan, and, and the neighborhood did have Zoom meetings over this, but of course, we couldn't have any in-person meetings, and there are people from Rockford who aren't here today because they're afraid of in-person meetings, but there may be some people in the audience who did make it, but I think we.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, so when you.
But I just think we need to see this before we go any further, to see how the stormwater's gonna roll and where it's gonna end up.
So this is our general, our site plan layout. This doesn't have the topography on it, unfortunately, but basically, the, the buildings will be at the crest of the mountain, we're basically cutting off the top of the mountain, and then, on the north side, which is the side facing the city, there will be, that will be completely undisturbed, the trees will remain, there won't be any disturbance on, on this area of the site. On the, this, I guess it would be the south side of the site will be, there was some, some grading, just to, to create the, the flat level area for the building. The detention system will be on the eastern side of the, of the building, down low. As you, as you fall off the side of the hill, we'll have our detention pond down low, one towards the back of the site, which will discharge out to the rear and sheet flow over the, the existing grade, the existing ground through the trees, it won't be disturbed. The other one on the, the south side, close to where Beacon Parkway, it'll be a much smaller pond, and it'll be connected directly to the existing underground drainage system, so that there won't be any overland flow out into Beacon Parkway, it'll all go into the existing drainage system.
Okay, so the existing drainage system is sufficient to hold all this?
And, and we've controlled, the, the detention ponds are sized so that there will be no increase, or, or there will not be a greater flow after the development as going there now. So as, as to yes, to not, we don't wanna obviously put more water going into the, the underground drainage systems, already going there now. That's, the detention pond will hold it back and, and release at a slower rate.
Okay, so you're saying that that wooded property that's undeveloped right now will put out less water when it's been stripped and developed than it's doing now?
The, the rate, we're holding back the rate. That's, the detention ponds are sized to hold back the rate of flow. Additionally, we've, we've designed to meet the, the city's stormwater, water quality requirements, an underground drainage pipe system, a perforated pipe, to try to let the water, some of the water, a, a, a portion of it, infiltrate back straight down into the ground. So with those two things, we're controlling the rate and providing a water quality, so that the, the water that's just charged off the site isn't at, at good quality. It's not gonna be dirty or polluted type water.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, were there other questions? I know we, Council Smith and Council Hoyt.
Yes, I, I saw this as well, Council Abbott, I know this is your district. They had questions about the erosion plan, water service, what else?
Traffic.
What, what'd you say?
Traffic.
Traffic, how will the Vulcan walking trail be impacted, sewer tie-in. You know, I'm not against development, but tell me, what's the price range for these apartments? Because we have a lot of apartments in Birmingham, and a lot of people that can't afford these apartments, so what's gonna be different between these and the lost downtown?
I'll, I'll let Ryan speak to the price.
Good morning. So, again, Ryan Bork with Rise Real Estate, specifically to the price points that we're gonna be going after. The residents and the, the product types that we see that are in need, and the ones that are being picked up the, the quickest are both in the, call it the medical district area by UAB and the, the hospital system, just to the north of us, and then to in the south, the Homewood neighborhood, again, has a, a bunch of our comps that we're going for, since those, that will be closest in proximity and drive time to us, Morarty, Park Lane, Hill, those will be our essential rental comps in the area, and those are typically around a buck fifty to a buck sixty on a square foot price, so fourteen hundred dollars to sixteen hundred dollars for an apartment for a, a one and a two-bedroom.
Would that include any utilities a part of the rent? Because that matters as well.
No, so mostly utilities will be, be required, will be addressed directly with the residents.
Okay, so, I'm a young millennial, I've lived in apartments. If my rent is fourteen hundred, let's say my power is about, mm, sixty or eighty dollars, so that's almost fifteen hundred. If you use water, that's thirty dollars. If we go with cable and internet, on a good day, that's one hundred. You're asking somebody to pay seventeen hundred dollars when almost two-thirds of our city is in poverty. I understand you refer to Homewood, but Homewood is a completely different city from Birmingham. And I'm really concerned that the neighborhood has not gotten their questions answered, because it doesn't matter about the erosion and the stormwater, because you and I don't live over there. They're the ones that live over there, so Council Abbott, have their questions been answered?
Well, they've been answered, but I don't think that they've been answered to the community's satisfaction, because the traffic study, which shows that there'll be no impact whatsoever between a piece of vacant property and a piece of developed property with 259 apartments on it, people were incredulous and did not actually, I don't believe, believe that there would be no impact whatsoever to the traffic. That didn't, it was illogical to most of the people who were on that call, and I think a lot of the, the vote of forty-seven opposed and four approved and four abstained is because people didn't feel that the stormwater runoff and the traffic, I think those were the primary concerns of people, and the fact that, you know, this whole mountain was mined all over everywhere, there are mines under the whole mountain, and we were told at that meeting that there were no mines under this property, and I don't think people really believed that. You know, they just, they live there, and they see what goes on, they already have some problems, and they're concerned that this, you know, that, that everything that they've been told is not a hundred percent accurate, and they're just worried, because these are their homes, and they live there twenty-four seven, and developers, you know, come and go. Usually, they come and go real fast, so, and then the people are left with whatever they've done. So I just think that there was a lot of concern from the people who live there, that, that there were issues with some of this reporting, and I guess some consternation that the city accepted all of it without question. I mean, they're just, the people are, the people who live over there are worried about the impact of this development. So, so that's where we are right now.
Okay, Council Abbott, can I ask Council Hoyt, since he has not spoken, uh, with?
I wasn't done.
Oh, you weren't, okay, I'm sorry, okay.
No, Council White can talk. No, no, it's, it's, we, we're already having a problem with stormwater management all over the city, and this neighborhood is concerned about it, we don't need additional problems with stormwater management for a new development. But, uh, Council White, you have anything?
Well, let me say good morning to all of you. I, I guess one of the disadvantages of being last, that a lot of questions have been raised, but I want to reemphasize, if I could, the issue of market rate and affordable housing, so there is no affordable housing for this project. And I think it, it matters, given the demographics of Birmingham. Now, Homewood is different. You know, Homewood got it going on, folk make money over there, and, but, but, you know, if we're gonna support a project that's gonna impact our infrastructure, you know, the runoff is something serious. I know that, because I see projects where you got this runoff, and, and it takes a lot to clean that water up, quite frankly. It costs more, that's why the sewers be going up and all that good stuff. But the fact that you're gonna be blasting, that's a concern of mine, because we know that even when you do the, the blasting, you may not see the, the immediate effects of blasting, but down the road, those homes that, that are, that, that are contiguous to the site, may experience some cracking and things of that nature, because it just happens. You know, I don't think none of us can prevent that from happening if, in fact, we use those measures when we talking about blasting. So that's a real concern of mine, and thanks to Hunter, he stole my thunder. When he said Homewood, and I put it here, I had, had already written.
Had them in your notes.
Yeah, had them in my notes.
Okay.
Homewood of Birmingham, we don't, we know it's a tale of two cities, I suspect. But, you know, our emphasis is Birmingham and minimizing what impact that may have on the Birmingham residents. But it seemed like you're billing for Homewood, you're not billing for Birmingham. And, you know, and I know we got, you know, governmental relations and all, but I think Homewood would be raising hell with Birmingham if we were gonna impact them the way they would, would possibly impact us. You know, and I know we have limited resources, and flooding is an issue throughout this city, I don't care where you are. You know, it's, it's an issue, so I, you know, I, I'm not in favor of this, of this project, not in this current state, and there are a lot of, you know, there are a lot of nuances that we haven't discussed that may be a problem later on, and, you know, I'm always cautious when, you know, when, when Ms. Katrina comes, you know, I listen, because I know she knows what she talking about, and I was just gonna listen to the end, and I did, and it says, "No recommendation from staff." Now, you know, the staff thought this was a good, you know, they be fighting for it. So I'm gonna tell you, Mr. President, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if this is a good one for us. You know, I know I'm on my way out the door, so it don't matter.
No, 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 you, 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 you are here.
As long as I'm here.
Yes, sir.
And so somebody takes my place, so, and then somebody's on their way to take my place. So, but anyway, I'm just, this is not good planning, you know, and certainly appreciate, you know, folks wanting to come here, and I do think neighborhoods do weigh in on these kinds of things. I just wished it would work in my district, you know, when we raise issues, but, you know, the council decides that we don't go head-on with it in a way, you know, and so it's, it is what it is, but I'm consistent in what I do.
Okay, has everyone at least asked their first round? Dr. Quinn, I think he's, you're, you're good, but do you have anything?
I got one question.
Okay.
So, other than the zoning, does the developer intend to request any kind of incentive from the city of Birmingham of any kind?
Zero.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we'll go, Counselor Williams.
In light of the fact that the developer doesn't intend to request any incentives, and I'm sure the developer realizes where they are now, I think, you know, it's, it's very important that we continue to add residents to the city of Birmingham. We have, over the past twenty years, been bleeding residents from the city of Birmingham. Some of that was made, brought to light with this past, the results of this past census that just came out, and while that, while that census might have some flaws in it for a myriad of reasons, you know, it is extremely important that we continue to have developers bring options for residents to move into the city of Birmingham, hopefully move into the city of Birmingham from the city of Homewood. So I, I do think that it is, that, that it is prudent of this council to make sure that we are doing whatever we can to support the growth of those that not only work in the city of Birmingham, but those that actually live in the city of Birmingham. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, all right, so here.
Yes, ma'am.
We had a person from the public that wanted.
Well, I understand, but I know, but Ms. Thomas, she wanted to, I know you made, you referenced her, so I'm sure she wants to, I wanna give her that courtesy, and then from there, we'll, we'll go to the public. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, sir. Councilor, I appreciate your trust in staff. I do want to clarify, staff did recommend approval of it, of the request. We try to stay consistent with the land use, long-range land use plan. The land use plan for this property shows general commercial, which would allow commercial and, and multiple family development, and so staff was in support of the request with those added Q conditions. It was the Planning and Zoning Committee that had a split vote and sent it with no recommendation. I also want to state that our chief civil engineer did review their drainage plan, and it is consistent with our post-construction runoff ordinance, and so although we do have flooding issues throughout the city, we do commend the developer for coming up with a, a drainage plan that will help slow that flow by adding the detention ponds to the site, and so I just wanted to provide that clarity.
Thank you. Council Hoyt, does that address some here?
Oh, yeah, you know, she thorough, she thorough, so I, you know.
Okay, all right, so that's what I wanted to do, before we went any further to, okay, all righty. Mr. Minor, do you have anything else to wrap up on, from your presentation, and then we will?
No, the only thing I would say is, is kind of what Counsel William was saying, the, obviously, this is a site that's on the boundary of multiple jurisdictions, there's actually a portion of this area that's unincorporated, Jefferson County, and, you know, one of the things that, that I mentioned to the development team about this site is that, you know, given, you know, some of the geotech issues, and again, we have a geotech person here, if y'all wanna get into weeds on that, that not seeking incentives and doing this kind of market rate was the, the right decision, and we met yesterday with Mr. Bell at the BCIA, even though we're not seeking incentives, this is something that this developer is focused on, and they're doing multiple developments in this area, so they're looking at developments in Bessemer and Hoover, so this is something that they're trying to have a, a critical mass of development in Birmingham, and, you know, even though they don't have to do the BCIA program, that's something that they are very interested in doing, so I just wanted to emphasize that, that that was not something we led with, but that definitely was a part of the conversation, since I've been engaged, about how they're looking to do development in Birmingham.
Okay. Council Hoyt, that's another thing, and you'll, Mr. Minor, you'll update us if the project, if the project moves forward, update us on all of those, that information on the.
Yes, sir.
On a ongoing basis. On a one basis. Okay. All righty. Yeah, let me just spend, I know there were a couple of residents that were, that wanted to speak. Are you the only? Okay. One, both of y'all just come on up and, if you'll state your name and your address, uh, for the record, and, and you'll have three minutes, uh...
Good morning. My name is Eric Backenstow. I'm a resident of 1,200 Beacon Parkway East. This is Jim Nardekia. He's in the same, uh, location. It's the Regency Crown condominiums up at the top of Beacon Parkway. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of, uh, our building in particular. I'm the HOA president, Jim's also on the board. We've been in contact with, uh, Regency Summit, Regency Terrace, which are the three condos that are on the top, and also the, uh, HOA Board President of Rockford down at the bottom of the hill. And we're all sort of have the same concerns we wanted to share with you. We're also very proud members of, uh, the city of Birmingham, not Homewood. We live there. I've lived there for quite some time, Jim has as well. Our, our concerns are, are multiple. That the area they're planning on developing is heavily wooded, has a lot of ground soil there, and as, as much assurances as we're getting from their engineering staff, we have a lot of runoff down Beacon Parkway anyway. It's a very steep drive. In the winter, when it's, it's icy, it's almost impossible to drive on because of the steep grade. And when we have even moderate amounts of rain, there's a huge amount of runoff. And even in between our condos, there's a, a huge amount of runoff. I'm just, I'm not sure how they're gonna be able to take the top of that wooded area off and control that water coming down Beacon Parkway and not overwhelm an already heavily-used water drainage system there. Also, adding that many more homes to that part of Beacon Parkway, it's gonna make it very highly densely populated. We're worried about, uh, traffic and concerns. I know that their, their traffic, um, project said that it would not be an impact. I, I can't imagine adding, you know, 300 parking spots and it not impacting the, the drive and the traffic going up, especially during the times when the buses are offloading the kids on Beacon Parkway East. It's, it's a very critical time, and adding that much more traffic, I think, is a safety issue for the people who are already living there, in the townhomes and in the condos and in the apartments across the street. We're also worried that if, if you do the amount of demolition to the top of that area that they're talking about, it could destabilize that part of Red Mountain that the rest of our houses and condos are on in the bedrock there. I, I applaud everyone's, you know, concerns about the, the, the safety and the, uh, the concerns from the Glen Iris community. We're with them as well. I'm not sure how well and how safe and livable our community is gonna be if we add that much more population density to that area. Jim, do you have anything?
Well, we already, one of my biggest concerns of the year is we already have a problem with, uh, believe it or not, with gunfire, where, uh, there are guns being fired, and we actually have damage on the rooftop of Regency Crown from bullets landing on the rooftop and cutting into the, uh, covering on the roof. And, uh, so we're always gonna be concerned about, uh, population density, what type of, uh, residents are gonna be moving into the area, and can we improve the environment, or are we gonna take it in a more, even more negative, uh, direction?
Counselor, did you have a question for the resident?
Yeah, well, I certainly, uh, appreciate you all coming and expressing your concerns, and, uh, and it's also a concern of mine, and I understand population, um, but, uh, population that is, that is inclusive, uh, not separate and apart, not exclusive, uh, I'm not for that. And we still serve the poor and the, the middle class and the rich. And so, and if, if we do development, it has to be, uh, to take in all of those factors. You know, um, you know, I'm, I'm real keen on, uh, deconcentrating poverty. And this administration seem to think that's the way we do it, is concentrate all the poor folk in one community like they doing in mine in District Eight. It's not fair. You know, and, and look like to me, and most developers, uh, they at least allocate, you know, five to 10% of their apartments to affordable housing. You know, that's really, um, when you think about housing on a larger scale than other cities is working, uh, when you do mixed housing. And so, um, but I just, you know, I just don't think that this should be, you know, this fact we losing population, uh, should be at the expense of those who cannot afford. I really don't think that's what we come here to, to do. I just don't think that. I think we represent everybody. And so, uh, but I certainly appreciate you all coming and raising concerns, because there are no guarantees. We know that.
All right.
You know, if you start blasting, what have you, you know, unless you understand the development, uh, and I think a few folks do, really understands it, um, it, you know, has long-term implications. And like I said, you know, the settling, uh, and, you know, stuff has to settle and all that, and it may not be right now, it might be 15 years down the road, and all of a sudden you got these big cracks in your house, and you're, and you're living in these nice houses. And, and then the developers, you know, going on, you know, going on to the next project. So it's, it's a concern. And, you know, I see what my colleagues do, but I'm consistent in what I do, so I'll sit back and watch.
If I could make one more comment? Uh, I moved to Birmingham from Ohio in 2010, and I just wanted to compliment the city on the growth and improvement of the city of Jefferson County and the city of Birmingham specifically in the 10 years I've been here. I'm very proud to be a resident of Birmingham. And our only point for being here is that we continue to have that kind of positive growth so that the rest of the country sees what great renaissance is going on in Birmingham, but that it's done in the right way.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, okay. Those, it was just the two of you all, correct? Yes, okay. All righty. We're now back to colleagues up here. Counselor Abbott, you have, uh, you wanna go ahead and start?
I would like to ask three, three more questions.
Okay.
First is about the blasting. Will there be dynamite used to take the top of the mountain off as we have been, you know, led to believe or not? Because I didn't hear the developers say that, I heard people say it, but is it true?
I'll ask Jason Avery, the geotech, to answer that.
Good morning. I'm Jason Ayers, Contour Engineering.
Can you speak a little bit more? We can't really hear you. We can, okay.
Jason Ayers, uh, geotechnical engineer with Contour Engineering. We're local. We did the geotechnical study and am familiar with the mining that has taken place on the site. This happened to be in an area that we feel we've got an understanding that it was stripped of the big seam of the iron ore. So things have been, if you walk the site, the strip pit is basically still present. And so, uh, there is a little bit of cut that needs to be done, uh, down to what we feel like is a, the finished floor elevation of 993. We feel like that rock is ripable down to that elevation of 993, or at least with other types of rock removal techniques such as rambo. So our plan, or our desire is not to blast. Hopefully we can rip most of that sandstone, uh, down to the elevation of the strip pit.
And what does ripable mean to the layperson?
Conventional equipment, dozers with rippers, I mean, there's obviously gonna be some vibrations, but, um, uh, big, big excavators are able to rip, I'm sorry, rip the rock instead of blasting. It's just another rock removal technique.
Oh, okay, they just claw it? They don't drill through it and drilling?
Shouldn't have to drill through it, no, ma'am.
Okay, and then, um, the sanitary sewer tie-in, where will that be? Will that be on the north face or the south face, or...
Yes, ma'am. That will actually be on the south face, um, near, right off of Beacon Parkway, um, east. There is an existing sanitary sewer manhole that was actually stubbed out to our side of the road, um, from the existing sanitary sewer line that runs down Beacon Parkway East. So that's the, the sewer line that we will be connecting to. And we've already submitted drawings to Jefferson County Environmental Department to start that, that permitting process for that.
Okay. And then the, the other thing is the buses that queue up on Beacon Parkway, and I know the developers have nothing to do with school buses, but they already cause some issues. And just for the comfort level of the council, there is a Section Eight apartment complex right across the street from Rockford. So it's not that there are no, no people, uh, living up there who are, are less, uh, able to pay $1,500 a month than others. We, we have a, a mixed bag up there, but there are, I mean, it's all apartments, except for Rockford. There are no single-family homes up there. It's all apartment complexes, many of them built in the 60s and 70s for the great influx of people that was coming to Birmingham. So I think that's all my questions. The blasting is a real concern because everyone will feel it.
Can I add one thing on the school bus? Um, so I've got a meeting, um, I was trying to get it before this meeting, uh, with Matthew Alexander from the school system, uh, with, I have a meeting with Matthew Alexander from the school system on Friday. We're meeting on a couple of mi- matters, including, uh, your project. Uh, and, and so one of the things we'll, we'll do in that meeting is to see about, uh, what we can do on the, on the school bus issue. I mean, obviously that is not, uh, private property, uh, where those buses are queuing in, but I understand what the issue is. And so I'll, you know, that will specifically be an item that we discuss, uh, when we meet with, uh, Mr. Alexander.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Are there other, um, questions, comments? Yeah, okay. Dr. Quinn?
So with, with regard to the, uh, stormwater drainage, um, my understanding of the code, our stormwater code that we did a couple of years ago is that, you know, there has to be inclusion of detention ponds and, um, and such that, uh, you can't increase the stormwater runoff, uh, of a property greater than it is currently.
Yes, that is correct. Um, we do calculations to figure out what's the existing runoff, including the trees and, and the conditions that, that the, the site is in now. And then when we go in and we pave the area, um, that's where we put the detention ponds in. And they're, they're, they're there to kind of control that water, hold that water, and release it at a slower rate than the, the existing rate that's running off the hillside now. So you are correct, yes.
Can our city staff confirm that, just for the record?
My name is George Pupman. I'm the chief civil engineer of the Watershed Group. And we do have a stormwater management plan, uh, that we've had, had under review for this project. It does meet the requirements of our post-construction ordinance for, uh, pre and post runoff. The post runoff will be less than the pre, and it does meet the city standards, so...
Thank you.
May I ask a question while he's up here?
Yes, ma'am, don't worry.
There has been a question asked to me that, um, you know, the city has fairly decent stormwater regulations, probably not as good as we wish they were, but certainly better than they were. But if there's the 100-year rain, or the 150-year rain, or the hurricane comes through and dumps, you know, 17 inches of rain on us, does that protect the adjacent property owners from being flooded, or is this only for like, quote, "normal" rain?
The stormwater management plan addresses the two-year through the 100-year storm. And each one of those storms, the post-construction runoff will be less than the pre. If we get a 17-inch rain, then it's gonna flood everywhere, so, you know, that's not something that our system could, could manage. We would be, uh, you know, we would have flooding all over the place.
So, but I just wanna make sure, because people's expectations, when they hear that no, no more water can come off the property than is coming off of it now, they think that that's like all the time. And if there is a huge rain event, the water will still come off and it will still go wherever it's going to go, whether it's on the neighbors or down the street, or over to Homewood, because Homewood is lower. So the water might go visit them too.
So in the, in their stormwater management plan, they took into the existing conditions where the trees and the, the site as it is now. Post-construction is after they build construction, and they have, uh, stormwater detention ponds whi- which will, uh, control the runoff for the, the various storms up to the 100-year storm. So, um, you know, the, it, it is a, you know, it's, it's designed to meet the standards that we have in place with the city, which in this case are very good because it's starting with a, uh, natural site. So they have to make sure that their post-construction is, meets the natural site condition, so, and they, and they do that in their plan, so...
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Dr. Cooney, you finish with all of your...
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay. I'm Clark. I think, uh, we're ready to vote.
Okay, the vote has started. The vote isn't coming up on my screen for someone.
Counselor Abbott, how would you like to vote?
I vote no.
Okay. That item passes. Next item, I'm Clark.
Okay, the next item is item number two. An ordinance to further amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, case number ZAC 2021-00001. To change zone district boundaries from MXD Planned Mixed Use District to QD5 Qualified Multiple Dwelling District in order to construct a new multifamily development along Lake Shore Parkway, filed by Andrew Phillips, representing the owner, the UAB Research Foundation, for the property located at 2800 Milan Court and situated in the northeast quarter of Section 31 Township 18 South, Range 3 West, in a hearing of all interested parties. And now we need a motion.
Good morning again. Katrina Thomas, I serve as interim deputy director in the Department of Planning, Engineering and Permits. Item two is case ZAC 2021, case number one. This is an application to change zone district boundaries from MXD, which is Planned Mixed Use District, to D5 Multiple Dwelling District in order to construct new multifamily development along Lake Shore Parkway. This application was filed by Andrew Phillips, representing the owner, the UAB Research Foundation, for property located at 2800 Milan Court and situated in the northeast, um, quarter of Section 31 Township 18, Range 3 West. This subject property sits on approximately four acres. It is currently zoned MXD, um, abutting the subject property to the north, it's undeveloped land, and northeast of the property is Hibbit Sports, also zoned MXD. Um, to the south of the property and west of the property is undeveloped property, also zoned MXD. And so the east of the property is Lake Shore, it's a Lake Shore pavilion, pavilion. Um, it's 288-unit multiple, um, family apartment complex, also zoned MXD. The current zoning of planned mixed use, um, is, is in commercial use group three. That does allow for commercial use groups, except residential. Um, it allows building contractors like manufacturing uses and also wholesale shipping, receiving, warehousing-type uses. The applicant's proposal is to construct a new multifamily development along Lake Shore. The plan will consist of 19 standalone buildings, providing 294 new residential units. The site will also include provisions for, for private amenities for residents. The city's long-range land use plan for this property, um, is general commercial and planned development. The general commercial district is designed to allow for areas serving citywide and regional trade areas, including shopping and entertainment-type uses. And the planned development is designed to allow for compatible and complementary mixture of residential office and commercial uses. Um, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the land use plan. The applicant's proposal for this property, um, shows that they will provide 437 parking spaces. spaces. The applicant's site plan does exceed the requirement for parking, so they will have to comply with engineering guidelines to support the excessive parking. When the development of the parking exceeds the maximum total, the pervious paving systems are required for those parking spaces, which exceed the maximum number allowed. The property must also comply with the city's landscaping plans and must be submitted at the time of permitting. The city's stormwater staff did review this applicant proposal, and there will be requirements for civil construction permits and soil erosion control permits as all new development in the city. The Department of Transportation states that all driveway sidewalk permits will be required, and any new construction must comply with BDOT requirements. The applicant did submit a traffic study for this project as well. The Oxmoor Neighborhood Association met at its regularly scheduled meeting on February 8th of this year to review the proposed project and did not take a vote on the request. The applicant and the neighborhood agreed to meet again before this item comes to city council. The neighbors did have concerns about the proposed project and wanted the current zoning to remain. The Oxmoor Neighborhood Association held a special call meeting on April 12th to review the proposed project, and they voted to approve the request. The vote was eight to zero, with the condition that the applicant add another exit and ingress and egress point to Lake Shore Parkway. The developer did take those concerns into consideration and did amend the plans to include that additional ingress and egress point. The property is located in southwest framework plan area. The framework plan for that area was adopted in May 2017. The implementation committee was formed, however, they have not been currently active lately due to COVID. The applicant's request is consistent with the future land use plan and does have merit for approval. Therefore, staff did recommend approval, subject to two conditions. One, that the proposed development comply with the Oxmoor Design Guidelines and be approved by the Oxmoor Steering Committee, and that the proposed development include the ingress and egress point on Lake Shore Parkway. The zoning advisory committee met on Tuesday, May 18th, and they voted to recommend approval with the same Q conditions as recommended by staff. And the planning and zoning committee of the city council met on July 21st, and they also recommended approval with the same Q conditions as recommended by the ZAC. And that concludes our report.
Okay. Good morning. How are you?
Morning. I'm Ingram Tynes with Tynes Development Corporation. We've put together a development plan.
So here, if you could talk a little bit...
I'm Ingram Tynes with Tynes Development Corporation. We have put together a development plan that is very similar to what we did in our Greystone development, that the neighbors looked at and really liked a lot. You can see the pictures of it down in the lower corner here, stone with dark siding. Been very successful there, and we thought that that would be a good fit for this neighborhood. This, we are basically, we're going to take down a building that UAB's had some issues with environmentally, and right next to Hibbett Sports. So we're going to knock that building down. We're going to have one three-story building with an elevator, kind of create an amenities center, and then we'll have multiple 10- and 14-unit buildings. There are only two levels, two levels of densities, two levels tall. So the density on this project is really not very, not very high. It's, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be able to leave some adequate green spaces as an accommodation to the neighborhood, and really to make this project better. We agreed to add another entry point, which is at Lake Shore Parkway. And we have an agreement with USX to acquire that piece of property. So that took any traffic concerns away from the neighborhood. The traffic study was fine without it, but with that there, that really makes it a simple matter for traffic. That's all I have. Walter Scholl Engineering is doing the engineering for us, so they'll, they're here if you have any engineering questions.
Okay. President Protell Alexander first.
Thank you, and thank you for making this presentation. I know that we do have some members of the Neighborhood Association that were here, and I did just want to reiterate, I know that you met a couple of times with the neighborhood, and you worked out some of the concern with the traffic. There's a lot of traffic that's being built with the new manufacturings that we have going on in the district. And so there's a concern about the neighborhood, is how the traffic would be managed. And I believe you did put that in Q conditions, where you're going to add that egress, or you're going to add another exit or opportunity to flow in and out off of Lake Shore Parkway. So I just wanted to be sure that that was addressed, and that the neighborhood was in agreement with those Q conditions. I mean, I believe that was what was reported by staff, correct? Okay. And I do know the neighborhood is here, so with this time for the public, they wanted to speak, Mr. President, if they'd be allowed. Those are my only questions. Thank you.
Do you want to go ahead and have them to make, to bring them forward?
Well, I know Mrs. Green is here, and I didn't know if you wanted to make any statement, or you wanted to speak to this item.
Okay. Come on up.
Good morning, first of all.
Good morning.
My name is Madeline Green. I live at 108 Munich Circle, Birmingham, Alabama. I am the Oxmoor Neighborhood Association president, newly elected. Just wanted to say, in terms of the Tynes Development, we did have them come back a couple, it may have been three times, but they satisfied everything that we asked them to do, and we welcomed them. And I had the opportunity to go to Greystone, and I have pictures on my phone, and was able to look inside the apartments and saw the little dog park. And, let's see, I think you had a clubhouse? Okay. And they assured us that they're going to do everything that we asked them to do, and also make it look just like Greystone. I have one question. Are you all going to make sure you do the gated? Because that was a question.
I don't, could you repeat that again? I couldn't hear it.
Question, Mrs. Green.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am, if you could.
Yes. Towards the end, I asked a question to Mr. Tynes, were they going to gate it the same as Greystone? And so at that time, he was a little hesitant, but he did say, I believe, that he was going to do it. So that's my question now, is that...
Well, you need an answer.
I don't think, I don't think that was a condition, but we do plan on, we do plan on gating it, but it's not, it's not 100%, but it's about 99.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Green.
Madam President, was that the only, you're the only...
I believe that's the only one that other members are present, but you're in agreement. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. President, let me say this. I always like it when I see community involvement in the neighborhood and the developers get together. This is what I call community engagement, and I want to thank you all for getting together with the community and working with the neighborhood president. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to reiterate my colleague's sentiments. I know that you guys have been working on this project for a very long time. I appreciate your patience with the City of Birmingham, as well as all the involvement. On a separate note, that you guys have done with the community. I think that community partnerships are important, and it is very, it makes the decision a lot easier for us when the developer and the community are on the same accord and not at each other's throats, and we're the judge of that. So thank you very much for your time and efforts in making sure that y'all are doing what responsible developers should be doing.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Counselor Hoyt? All right. All right. Ready for Madam President. Madam President?
The voting has started. Counselor Hoyt? The votes should be up.
Okay. The item passes. Next item, Madam Clark.
Okay. The next item will be item number thirty-one. Let me check that. Item number thirty-one, it's on page 21. An ordinance to further amend the grants fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022 by appropriating $4,962,813.30 to Community Development Emergency Rental Assistance II, ERA II, per grant award received. And I need a motion, please.
Uh, Counselor Hoyt, did you have some questions, or you need some additional information? What? It's your pleasure.
Well, I was trying to see who's going to administer the rental assistance. I didn't see an agreement.
So Counselor, we have, we have a partnership with the Alethia House, and we also have our team members, Mr. Chris Hatcher, who's here to speak to the item, so he can answer any questions you may have. But we're in partnership with the Alethia House. We'll ask Chris to come in.
Good morning. Chris Hatcher, interim director, Community Development. I'm sorry, I did not hear the question.
It was from Counselor Hoyt had a question.
Yeah, I was trying to see who was going to administer this, this $4 million, and how, and I guess how we're going to track it, and why did we perhaps include some other nonprofits who could have helped? Because the issue is, the money is not getting to the people in a timely fashion. And I don't know if Alethia House, now that I know the Alethia House, you know, have different projects going on, and if in fact they can meet all the needs. That's what I'm trying to figure out. Because the issue is, the money is not making it to the folk who need it. You know, and I've heard any iterations of folks not getting the rental assistance. And so how do, how do we address that?
Okay. Okay, well, we haven't determined who is going to administer, what nonprofit is going to administer ERA II yet. We're just accepting the funds from the federal government now, so we'll still have to go through the review and the contracting process.
Can you speak into the mic?
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, sir. You know, I'm a little older than this guy.
Okay. Okay. So, yeah, we're just accepting the funding from the federal government today. We have not gotten into the contract of what organization will administer the program, if it will be an outside organization, or if we will administer in-house through Community Development. So we've got to accept the dollars first, receive them, and then be able to, you know, analyze what we've done well in ERA I, and what we have not done well, and make the determination then. But the goal is just to accept the money right now, and then try to identify how the program, and who will administer the program.
Yeah, well, and I hope that you all consider others besides Alethia House, and that you all include some of these other nonprofits that probably could get that money out.
Well, it will. If we, if we choose to, you know, alter the agreement with Alethia House, they are still on the table, they are administering ERA I. And I can say that, you know, I think we, as a city, have not, we've done fairly well compared to a lot of cities across the nation as far as getting the money out. We stood up a program, and a matter of months, we didn't begin taking applications really till late May, early June. And today, in a little bit less than three months, we've almost awarded almost $2 million in assistance. So that goes without saying. We had barriers, we had obstacles, we've been able to be nimble and try to overcome those barriers. But the program is up and running, and it is, right now, working well. As far as ERA II, there are some subtle changes to the eligible activities under that program, and that's where we're going to have to look and see if Alethia House or what organizations are the best organizations to administer that program, or if it's better that we just do it in-house. So those decisions will be determined, and if we do decide to contract with a outside organization, we'll have to bring that contract back to budget and finance, and back to city council for approval.
Well, I certainly appreciate it, but I think I saw something not two months ago where we were having a problem trying to get the money out to folks. So I'm just saying, diversify who it is that's distributing this rental assistance, so we can get folks, and they don't have to be homeless and on the street. And so I just think that's important. That should be a priority of ours. But I hear you.
Counselor. Good morning. Cal Vada, Mayor's Office. To your point, the Treasury Department requires an RFP process, and so that's what Community Development deployed for the selection of that vendor. There was only one applicant, well, there were two applicants, one simply was not up to it in terms of the amount that they wanted to charge. It was over the 10% allowance from Treasury, and so Alethia House fell within the capacity of, in terms of providing that support, and also what we could spend on that. And so if you'll take a look at these numbers here, and kind of what's happening around the country, there've been, we've been working directly with the Department of Treasury. They have begun to relax and kind of amend their requirements, because they were quite arduous at the very beginning of it, the process. And so there were complaints from every level of government that received these dollars. We have been able to get these out. And if you look at the second page of the handout that we provided for you, you'll see extreme escalation in the number of dollars, in the number of folks that we've been able to serve, June, July, and August of that year. So we're at, fully at, was it $6 million the total allocation?
Six point two million.
So we're almost at a third of all the dollars that we have, counsel. So I think that the team has been, I guess Chris said, very nimble, but they've worked very hard. We've had one public process where we went out into the community. We're going to be having more of those, being face-to-face with folks. A lot of this has been documentation issues, and we've continued to relay those challenges to the federal government. And again, they have provided some allowances, including some updated guidance as recently as the 25th last Wednesday. So we are continuing to work with the federal government and work with our local provider in Alethia House and our residents, and getting the word out, and doing our very best to help our folks who are most in need.
You're so efficient, because I was going to ask if you have any demographics, but I would hope that you could zero it down even further, and to let us see by districts.
On the third page, Counselor, we'll work on that for you. On the third page there is a map of...
Yeah, the map doesn't tell me.
Now, Counsel, you've been around 16 years. You could have all that map. But we'll get it to you.
Hey, don't be messing my age, I'll sue you.
I'll get you one with some lines.
All right, now, all right, let's go.
Yeah, well, I mean, I just need to see districts. I think y'all will know that. You know where you've been serving.
We can do it easily by zip code. We'll see if we can overlay the district boundaries as well.
Yeah. I'll be interested to see.
Yes, sir.
Because I, you know, I got a vast amount of multifamily and accidents, to be honest, it's the highest density area per capita in the whole state of Alabama. So I just need to know where the money been spent.
Yes, sir. And so again, that map is the first start on that, but we'll get you something even more detailed.
Before it comes, I guess they're going to pass it today. But, okay.
This is just putting the money in place.
Right. Today's item simply allows us to accept additional ERA dollars from the federal government.
And then there'll be, and then there'll be a contract.
Yes, sir. We still have to come back to you all and work with the council on putting the actual program in place.
Okay. Counselor Hoyt, you okay?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. President Protell Alexander?
Yes, thank you. And thank you all for giving us this update. Hold on, gentlemen. I have a question. I did just want to ask, this again is just, our vote today is allowing us to accept these monies. And I wanted to know, with this sort of second wave, do you see any difference in some of the criteria that residents may have to meet? Is there an opportunity here where people may have not been able to meet certain guidelines before this continues the same set of guidelines?
The eligibility is the same. You have to meet the income eligibility, which is 80% of low to moderate income. You have to prove that you've been impacted by COVID. There are some instances under ERI II where you don't have to... There are some instances under ERR two where you don't have to prove whether you've been impacted by COVID under some of the activities. So, like I said before, there are those subtle changes, but yeah, for the most part, the eligibility criteria are the same.
Okay, and I also know you did mention briefly, you have had, I know other agencies have gone out to the public and have offered some in-person, I believe you had one, was that at Crossplex, or where was that?
Yeah, that was at the Birmingham Crossplex, Bill Harris Arena on August the seventh.
Perfect, and we, with granted this money, do you plan to change any of that process a little bit to go back out and make this more available where people are?
We will, we will. Right now, although we have not determined, identified a date, our plan is to, at the minimum, go back out and do it at least once a month. That bill, uh, that event at Bill Harris was very successful. We were able to assist over a hundred and sixty, uh, households with rental and utility assistance.
All right, thank you very much, those are my only questions, Counsel.
Uh, Counselor Williams.
Thank you, I just wanted to commend, uh, Mr. Datcher on, um, uh, his explanation, I thought it was wonderful. Welcome back, we haven't seen you in a while, but, um, it, it's nice, uh, to see you again, and I'm excited to accept this new bucket of money, um, to Birmingham. So thank you Kelvin for being here, and it was an excellent explanation.
Okay, all righty.
Yeah, me, thank you.
All right, Madam Clark, we're ready for a vote.
The vote has started.
Okay, all right, that item passed, the next item, please.
Okay, the next item will be item number thirty-seven. It's on page twenty-two. An ordinance assenting to the annexation of territory contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Birmingham pursuant to sections eleven dash forty-two dash twenty-three, eleven dash forty-two dash twenty-four of the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, so as to embrace and include within the corporate area of the city certain territory described in the petition of Abbey Greystone LLC consisting of an approximately two point three-three acre tract of land located on Cahaba Valley Road in unincorporated Shelby County. This is an item of permanent operation, and this is the first reading, so we need unanimous consent to bring it up today.
I move for unanimous consent.
That's Counsel Alexander. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, hold one second, let me do this. Okay, now we need a vote to adopt the item.
I move approval.
Aye.
Okay, hold one sec. The vote has started. The vote is up.
Okay, all right, that item passed, the next item.
The next item is on page twenty-three, item thirty-eight. An ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an assignment of a redevelopment agreement between Zimmerman Properties S E L L C of North Carolina Limited Liability Company and twenty-three oh one Ensley LP of Missouri Limited Partnership, under which the twenty-three oh one Ensley LP will redevelop property known as the former Ensley High School located at twenty-three oh one Avenue J, Birmingham for a mixed-use development, and the city shall convey the property to twenty-three oh one Ensley LP for a price of fifty thousand dollars, which the city has determined to be the use value of the property as defined in Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, section twenty-four dash two dash six eight, and shall further provide certain incentives in the form of a city grant of up to one million five hundred thousand dollars in connection with the project, and that providing the city grant will promote the economic development of the city constitutes a public purpose and is authorized by, consistent with, and in furtherance of the objectives of amendment number seven seven two. This also is an item of permanent operation, and we need unanimous consent to take it up today.
Mr. President.
Second.
Mr. President.
Excuse me, Counselor, do you mind, well, we've got to get it, for unanimous consent before any discussion can be held first.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, now.
Now we need a motion.
Second. Item is before us, I'm going to go Counsel Hillier and then Counsel Hoyt.
Can you go on this end sometime, uh, Counsel, because I have some questions I want to ask.
Okay, I will, but...
There don't seem to be much questions coming from the other side, so let me just...
Okay, well...
Mr. President, I yield to...
Okay, so Counsel Hoyt, you?
Yeah, well, I want to, I thank Mr. Wesley, I think he called me last evening, um, to explain what was, uh, transpiring here, and, um, and I, I guess, and he said it was a name change, and so, I kind of wanted to know why was the name changed? And I didn't get that answer because he didn't have that answer at the time. And so, if I could get that this morning, um, and just trying to understand, because I, I think it's important for the Counsel to know, um, you know, the various reasons that LLCs, and, and in this case, it's a LP, which is a limited partner as opposed to a limited, um, corporation, okay? So, um, so if you could, yeah, if you could come and share with me what you've been able to ascertain.
Well, good morning, Councilmen and Women. Again, my name is Cornel Wesley, I serve as the Director for the Office of Innovation and Economic Opportunity. To further illuminate your question, Counselor, uh, this is actually an assignment to a single-purpose entity. It is the same team with the same partners. Technically, it's not a name change, however, it assigns the developers to a legal entity that was created solely for the Ensley project. It's just the next step that is required for liability reasons and which is also required in order to obtain, track, and manage some of the tax credits from the state. The single-purpose entity protects the project and the grant funds in the event of an accident at other properties within the Zimmerman portfolio. So this is purely an administrative movement, it is immaterial to the city's position, and it is, it is necessary in order for us to move forward with this transformative project in Ensley. Today, we also have Chris Hatcher, if you need a refresher on the impact on what that brings, as well as representation from the firm, Mr. Robert Fink is also present if you would like more discussion or additional questions specific to the development.
Good, I'm glad you explained it, because I had, uh, had my notes here.
Yes, sir.
Sir, because I think the Counsel needs to be, um, aware that, um, many times when, when you have such a change, that, um, it, it bears on the ability of, of a corporation or limited partnership, uh, to have access to, uh, public funds and those kinds of things. And so, I just wanted you all to know, so when that happens again, then we will know, maybe y'all been briefed on that, I don't know, you know, I, I can't assume here, but, uh, but in order for me, uh, I got to know.
Yes, sir, and, and that's a great point, Councilmen. Uh, it is probably gonna happen again if we engage in development, it is somewhat of an industry pa- practice, so as we continue to grow as a city and, and expand our reach in the development community, uh, our hope is that we have these further discussions.
Yeah, well, thank you, you've done a, a great job this morning.
Thank you, sir.
You might be hanging out with Kevin Datcher, I don't know.
Is there all of the questions, Counsel?
Um, yeah, I, I'd still, I still have, um, pains about concentrating poverty in one, one area. I, I do, and I really don't think, you know, this is a good, uh, development for that, for that area. I really don't, and stack housing is not how you do it, but, you know, I was looking more, we have that vast of, of property in a, in a city. I would think that if you, if you, uh, have this vast of property, uh, in a, in a city, particularly the Ensley, um, site, that we would spend more time on single-family detached home, because it gives a sense of, um, of ownership, uh, for the community. It, it establishes consistency, because when you deal with, um, multifamily and some of this, it's, it's transit, you know, and, uh, and we really need folks to have a stake in the community, and I don't know if we achieved that with this, particularly when the Housing Authority spent, um, an enormous amount of money. I think the city paid about nine million dollars for infrastructure as a part of the agreement we had with HUD, uh, with the forty-five to fifty million dollars, uh, for Tuxedo, um, Terrace, I think it's called now. And, and the whole irony behind that was to deconcentrate the poverty, because we, we discovered that there were too many folk in one area, and now you proposing to put more people in the same area that we, we deconcentrated and, and, and lowered the density of the site. And we did build single-family de- um, detached homes there, and I thought this would be a, a compliment, but it's not. And so, um, I don't think we can expect Ensley to change, quite frankly, uh, with this kind of, uh, development, and it doesn't really lend itself, um, to us, you know, being healthy, and you, when you put all the poor folk in one area, uh, that's not development, that's not thinking outside the box, that's limited thinking, and I'm done.
Okay, Counsel Hillier.
No, Mr. President, uh, at this time, uh, are there any other folks going to come up and talk to us, or are we moving on, having other comments? I, I look forward to it, because, you know, our population has really diminished in Birmingham. Hospital is overthrowing us by leaps and bounds. I would hope, while I do agree with, uh, my colleagues, I would hope that we will continue to grow our community, uh, in single-family homes as well, but I think we need a multiplicity of, uh, diversity throughout our community to continue to grow, and I would like to continue to work with this project and others that are positive impact on our city and continue to move forward. So, uh, I'm ready, Mr. President, whatever you are.
Mr. Mr. President, we'd just like to add a caveat to speak to Counselor Hillier's point, if we could bring Mr. Chris Hatcher up to speak to some of the single-family dwellings that are going to be built in that area too.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
All right, so...
Speaking to the mic.
Yes, sir, okay, and, and, um, Councilman Hoyt, um, City Council, to y'all's point, um, concentration of poverty is a, a bad thing, and it's, it's been referenced in HUD's practices in trying to decentralize or decentralize posi- uh, poverty within its housing developments. And we, at the city of Birmingham, we are trying to, you know, provide more affordable housing, but at the same time, provide more market rate housing, because you need to have that appropriate mix of housing. And to that end, you know, you all know about the twenty-eight units that market rate housing, uh, development, we partnered with NCRC Growth in, um, in Oak Hills. That's a part of our initiative, not just in Ensley, but we're looking to take this citywide. We want to provide affordable housing and market rate housing citywide. That's the only way to have a hefty mix of, uh, housing that accommodates all of our citizens. Some other projects that we're working on are some single-family market rate housing with BEAT. In Pratt City, we're, uh, working with Navigate to do market rate, single-family, uh, housing, or, you know, maybe higher density single-family housing on the edge of one Pratt Park. So, you know, hate, hate to say this, but as the city of Birmingham and our housing, you know, the climate, we didn't get like this overnight. For, we didn't, I mean, our housing, our housing conditions didn't happen overnight. And it took, it took us decades to get here, and it's going to take us a while to rightsize it, and unfortunately, we, we can't brave a magic one, we have to, uh, deal with the market, and we have to deal with developers, and we have to incentivize where we need to, and then we can let the market take, take its course if it's in, if it's in keeping what the city goes in other areas. So, we are actively working for affordable housing and market rate housing, but we have to do it in a smart and strategic way.
Mr. President, I, I, I do want to thank...
It's going to be brief, uh, so, um, and, and I, I understand that, but, but I think it's important for the Counsel to know what are your plans, because obviously you know where you're going, you know what you're doing, and, um, and I think the Counsel needs to know, and so we can have some, some input on what it is that you, that you want to do, uh, but, you know, don't put stuff out and then expect, you know, and at least for me, expect me to, to jump on it when, and, when you didn't include me on the front end, you know? You just kind of say, hey, this what we're going to do, and, uh, what have you, but I would have weighed in, because I have, I have, uh, real concerns and views about, uh, deconcentrating poverty, I do, you know, and it ain't going to go away. I'll still be around, uh, so, but, uh, I just want us to get in a, in a, in a, in a mode that, that we're very strategic and that we're very intentional in terms of how we grow this city. I hear this, uh, you know, this, uh, misnomer about, uh, Birmingham losing population and all that, and, uh, and we got three or four families living in one house, so I, you know, I ain't buying all that. Y'all can buy it, but you need to understand who wrote it, okay? It wrote it for their benefit, didn't write it for our benefit. So, you, you got to understand, that's propaganda in all of that too, okay? And so, Birmingham has been the cash cow for the whole state of Alabama, you know? So, I, I don't buy all that, now y'all can buy it, but I don't buy all that. And if you just, you know, read and understand, uh, you know, demographics and all, uh, you know, you know that we really haven't lost any population, quite frankly. You know, we had an inque- uh, influx of folks, and we've had an increase of people coming to, uh, into, into, into the city of Birmingham, but that's neither here nor there, that was a political moves, uh, to satisfy, uh, other interests and what have you, and I know what that interest is too, but, uh, I appreciate you, uh, explaining, but I just think it is, it's apropos, Chief, Chief of Staff, for the Counsel to understand what is the housing plan, because we don't need to be looking at this year, we need to be looking at a five-year, ten-year, fifteen, twenty-year plan with respect to housing, because if you don't plan, then, uh, and I know the economy plays a big part of that, but in spite of the economy, you still got to have a plan as to how do you, uh, repopulate and at what rate, and because, you know, I'm not really, uh, opposed to some of the justification that, that happens, it's just that you got to build market rate, uh, you got to be affordable housing at the same rate as market rate. I think you could strike a, 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 a good enough balance when you look at that, so, and I, I want to say, I want to see the balance and what it is we doing, and I, you know, and I, you know, and I don't want to hear it after you've made a decision on the project, but I want to hear it as, and the Counsel needs to hear it as you plan for the future, that's what I want to see, I want to see that five-year, ten-year, you know, we used to do that in, in planning development, you know, we had a ten-year plan, fifteen-year plan, twenty-year plan, and so that's what we want to see. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to get that off my chest.
Sir, all right, uh, with that, uh, Dr. Quinn, then we're going to, uh, take a vote on that, go ahead, Dr. Quinn.
I'm, I'm going to make this quick, but I'm going to take advantage of the segue that Counsel Hoyt afforded with his, uh, comments about, uh, housing. I would like to get an update on the number of now three-year tax delinquent properties in the city of Birmingham, um, and a visual representation of that as had been provided in the past, uh, showing the actual parcels, uh, across the, the city. Like to, to get an update on that and see where we are in terms of numbers and where the highest concentrations of tax delinquent properties are. Thank you.
Yes, sir, Counselor, we'll make sure you get that information, sir.
Okay, all right, um, let's take a vote on this item here.
The vote has started.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Counselor, President Portium Alexander.
Okay. All right. Item passes. And I will just note to everyone, we'll take an inventory of different requests that we would need to have and schedule committee to hold and send that communication over to the mayor and try to have that. So, all right, next item.
The next item is item number thirty-nine on page twenty-three. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Bush Hills Connections, under which the city will lease real property located at eight oh one, eight oh five, and eight thirty-three Eighth Avenue West, Birmingham, to Bush Hills Connections. And Bush Hills Connections will construct and operate a farmer's market, providing fresh vegetables, fruits, and other food items, and provide outdoor pet amenities to the citizens in the community. The rental term is three years at a rental cost of one dollar per year.
I move approval.
Second.
Sir?
Yes. Well, this is in my district. There are some good things going on in District Eight, and we have the President, Ms. Strata, and Mrs. Thompson, who very much involved in the Bush Hill Connection here this morning. And I just think it's just wonderful. They've been a delight to work with over the years, and we just appreciate the leadership that they have provided us, and I just think this is a good project. But I do need to see a little bit more advertisement in terms of what we offer, what we're going to be able to offer, and maybe as a part of your all's plan to deal with marketing, because I think other neighborhoods need to be able to participate and come and benefit from this because these are city dollars. And so you all just need to include a marketing plan. How do you get people there and adjacent neighborhoods and what have you? And so, but I'm very proud of the work that they have done at Bush Hills, and I'm just glad it's happening on my watch. So just wanted to say that. And I don't know if they want to say anything or not, but they just want this project, they want me to vote on it. That's what I got the message last night, saying you better vote on it, and you better not listen. And I said, well, okay, and I'm going to vote on it, but I'm also going to let folks know what we're doing, okay? Sometime it's for public consumption, and people need to know that these things are happening, these developments are happening in particular communities. And so, but it's just wonderful to know that we've got some folk up there working hard. They've been working with UAB and, you know, developing a strategic plan, and they want to renovate houses and different things of that nature. So people need to know that, and we want all of our neighborhoods to get as organized as these folk. And I think they need to share how they got there with other neighborhoods so that they can come online and develop this same kind of strategy. So thank you, Mr. President.
All right.
Sounds like a great idea. I do have a question, though. This is the former site of the Hong Kong Chinese market, and which was demolished a while ago, and there's currently like a construction fencing, if I remember correctly, surrounding that. So that just makes me concerned that there might be some safety concerns there, or is the city going to work with Bush Hills Connections to make sure the site is safe?
Egress and ingress, because that's probably what you need to address on that site.
Yeah, I'm definitely in favor in this. I just would want to make sure that, you know, any trip hazards or anything like that are addressed.
Counselor, our Office of Innovation and Economic Opportunity, Innovation and Economic Opportunity is here to speak to that, to answer your question. Mr. Cornell Wesley and Ms. Janice Dauth are here.
Good morning once again. My name is Cornell Wesley, Director for the Office of Innovation and Economic Opportunity. And to answer your question emphatically, yes, we are working hand in glove with the Bush Hills community to ensure a vibrant experience for the community and for our citizens across the entire city. It is an amazing project, great proposal, and we anticipate an enormous amount of impact and jump-starting our ability to solve the food desert issue through their Healthy Food Initiative that they will be offering those, that community.
Can you confirm that we're going to, or that the site will be addressed, you know, such that the slab, I mean, it's basically a parking lot and a slab currently, and especially where the building was?
Sure.
You know, because there's foundations there and stuff like that. I mean, maybe that part of the site is not going to be used for the market, but in any case, I just want to, you know, make sure that we're addressing any safety hazards that may exist on the site prior to, you know, this being implemented.
Well, certainly, we, the city will, and our position has been that we will work hand in glove with them and ensure a vibrant experience, which includes the infrastructure. I would note that they also have been successful to their end in procuring additional resources by way of capital for themselves as well to operate and sustain this. And so collectively, we'll ensure a vibrant experience.
All right, thank you.
The vote has started.
Okay, the item passes. Next item.
The next item is also, is on page twenty-four. Item number forty-one. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Birmingham Jefferson County Transit Authority, under which the BJCTA shall provide transit services throughout the city by operating such fixed routes and/or paratransit services and schedules as set forth in the agreement for a term commencing July first, 2021, and terminating December thirty-first, 2021 during the city's 2022 fiscal year, and the city shall pay BJCTA a total sum of five million dollars.
I move approval.
Second.
All right. Are there questions, anything? We're good? Everybody's good? Okay. We're ready.
Okay. All right, that vote has started.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, all right, that item.
Oh, Council Hoyt.
Okay, all right. That item passes. Uh, next item.
Okay, the next item is item number forty-two. Also on page twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute all documents required for the city to complete a grant application with the Federal Communications Commission Emergency Connectivity Fund, ECF Grant, a program that grants schools and libraries, that helps, I'm sorry, that helps schools and libraries provide tools and services for remote learning during the COVID-19 emergency period. The Birmingham Public Library will use the grant funds to purchase forty iPads for internet connectivity and device access outreach, concentrating on school-aged children and the elderly. The total funding award is eighteen thousand, one hundred thirty-four dollars. No managing funds are due from the city, and authorizing the mayor to take any and all actions and execute such other documents as are appropriate and necessary to make application, accept and expend the grant funds in accordance with the program terms.
So, um. All right. Any questions, anything on that? All right, we're ready.
Okay. The vote has started. Uh, Council Hoyt. Okay, that vote should be up.
Okay, all right, that item passes. We've got, is forty-four also that you?
I didn't have that one taken.
Okay.
Okay, item forty-five was withdrawn.
Okay, all right, we're going to go to fifty, number call it seventy.
You said you wanted to go to seventy?
Yes.
Item seventy, which is one of the addendum items. A resolution authorizing the mayor to appropriate funds in the amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars pursuant to section thirty-six dash twenty-five A dash three Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five for the authorized services to be used to electronically notify neighborhood residents of city council meeting dates and times, updates on neighborhood improvement and revitalization projects, and citizen awareness initiatives set some to come from the Birmingham City Council discretionary funds.
So, um.
Second.
Mr. President, what are we doing? This has not been to committee, and neither one of these have. What is this? What are we doing?
Yeah, so on this, we're using this to, to notify, to better notify our different neighborhoods of different things going on within the neighborhood. What committee should it have gone to?
Budget and Finance, it's money.
Okay, why don't we do a, we're going to do a one-week delay? You meet?
Is it an emergency?
No, no, no. Do you meet, you don't meet Monday because it's a holiday.
Monday is Labor Day.
Okay, all right, we'll do a two-week delay on that. Okay, we'll do it in, on item number seventy, and also when we do a, we'll call up seventy-one.
Can I go now?
All right, yes, you can. Okay, all right, we're going to vote. We'll do a two-week.
I've got the motion from Council President Parker, who seconded it.
Okay.
Sir?
Okay.
All right.
Okay, that vote has started.
Okay. Okay, all right, that item, two-week delay. Item number seventy-one, real quick.
Item seventy-one is a resolution determining that the Magic City Classic Pitch Competition that will take place on or around October fifteenth through November fifteenth, 2021, for the general public, serves a public purpose that promotes goodwill and serves the public's interests, and authorizing and empowering the mayor to expend funds up to ten thousand dollars per event to pay for goods and services in accordance with section three dash one dash seven of the General Code of the City of Birmingham.
I'm ready for a two-week delay. So it can go to committee.
Okay, all right. Ready to vote.
That vote has started.
Okay, all right, it's two-week delay. All right, uh, so that.
Okay, so now we're going back to item number forty-eight. Item number forty-eight is on page twenty-six. A resolution determining that the I-20X High-Speed Rail Conference that will take place on or around November first, 2021, through March thirty-first, 2022, for the general public is a public purpose that further provides for the poor and needy citizens, and authorizing and empowering the mayor to expend funds up to ten thousand dollars to pay for goods and services in accordance with section three dash one dash seven of the General Code of the City of Birmingham.
Move the item?
Second.
All right, so.
Mr. President?
Yes.
On this item, I know that the submitter is obviously not here today, but this is something that I've had conversations with Council Woods about, and I think it's something that's prudent that we discuss. If this, if there's an issue with it going to BNF Committee, that's fine.
We've approved these before, and he's had, he's had several conferences before over the last two years. So this is something that we have approved before, declaring it a public purpose.
Go to committee? I thought we went through committee. For budget finance.
All right, let's just do this.
I don't remember it.
Okay, here's, so.
I thought it would have gone to Transportation, too.
Okay, well, Chair is not here, and the, so you want to vote to, my motion is to move forward with it? We've approved this one before, and like I said, Council Woods is not here. So, but I will advocate for it. Like I said, he's had several high-speed transportation conferences before, and so this is nothing any different. So move that we approve it.
Second.
Okay, the vote has started.
Okay.
Counsel Alexander.
Okay, all right. Items approved. Next item, please.
The next item is item number sixty-two. It's on page twenty-nine. A resolution approving payment to Clark Mosquito Control Products sent St. Charles, Illinois, in the amount of one thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty-two cents for the purchase of a Grizzly pump assembly in accordance with section three dash one dash seven of the Birmingham City Code for the Department of Equipment Management.
Move the item?
Second.
All right, Counsel Abbott.
Yeah, and I pulled this off because I'm fairly certain that it will be used to spray mosquito poison all over all of us, and I object to that because we spray for mosquitoes when mosquitoes aren't out. So I guess we're doing it for a PR thing, but poison is poison. And, you know, you remember the government told us all kinds of things, we're safe. Remember Roundup? You could spray it on your food and eat it. Well, guess what? You know, so I'm just, I'm opposed to going around spraying everybody with poison. And so I'm voting no. I may be alone, but I'm voting no. Grizzly is a good name for this.
Okay, any other comments? Okay. All right, we're ready.
The voting has started.
Okay, all right, the item passes. Next item.
The next item is item number sixty-nine. One page. Thirty, thank you. Receiving the emergency repair notice from the purchasing agent relative to emergency repairs of a collapsed sewer pipe in the vicinity of eleven twenty-one Brock Industrial Drive, and this does not require a vote of the council.
All right. Okay.
And that's the last item on the table.
All righty, this will just go to old and new business. And before we do that, just want to take a moment to congratulate the mayor and also colleagues up here, and also Counsel-elect Ms. Clark as well on their wins on last Tuesday. So I just wanted to make sure that we did that to congratulate everyone. So with that, we will go to Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Eastwood neighborhood will be meeting on telephone September the second at six thirty PM. This Monday is Labor Day weekend, so hope that everybody has a safe and enjoyable holiday. I know right now, because of the amount of rain that we're going to have throughout the City of Birmingham, want to remind people to call three-one-one in terms of the storm sewer backup issues. And I just want to confirm with the And I just want to confirm with the administration that three-one-one is still the best way to do that, because we're, because my office is getting a lot of calls about specific storm sewer, uh, every time it rains, but obviously this morning, after it had rained through the evening, we were inundated with calls about that. So is three-one-one still the best way for clogged storm sewer inlets?
So, yes, it's, it's kind of like we did on a couple of other three-one-one-related items. We still want them to file the complaint, Counselor, with three-one-one. But when there are challenges with residents, we don't want them stranded. So send those to you all, and you can send them to us, so we can make sure our stormwater team assist, stormwater and DPW assist whatever way possible. So we don't want people just waiting if there's a challenge with three-one-one. But we still want them with a muscle memory, because as C Click Fix gets done, we want people to still use three-one-one.
Okay.
So send those to you.
So, so I'll, so I can get, so I can include case numbers to y'all as well?
Yes, please do, we always recommend doing that, yes.
All right, just wanted to let everybody know that we're getting them and passing them along.
Thank you, Counselor Williams. Counsel Smithman?
Uh, yes, thank you, President Protem Alexander. Uh, I just want to thank all of the District Six residents, and really the constituents of Birmingham for coming out and voting, uh, last Tuesday. Uh, I am excited to continue to work with my colleagues. Uh, I know the ones who are up here, we got re-elected, um, and continue to do work. I look forward to continue to work on affordable housing, environmental injustice, and, uh, I look forward to making sure we have more community engagement as well. Also have a happy, uh, Labor Day weekend, and please be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Abbott.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I do want to say congratulations to all my colleagues and the mayor for enduring. Uh, this is, this was the strangest reelection campaign I have ever experienced. I hope to never experience one like this again. Just very odd, but congratulations to everyone who was re-elected without a runoff, and our sympathies to the people who are in runoffs. Uh, the next Budget and Finance meeting will be September thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, at three-thirty PM. This coming Monday would have been the Budget and Finance meeting, but it is Labor Day, and we don't want to labor that day. Submissions are due by September, on September eighth, at twelve noon. So, uh, that gives everybody a little time, but if you want to get your submissions in early, that would be even better. Thanks to everyone for their cooperation, and, um, I want to wish everyone a safe and enjoyable Labor Day. Eat a lot of good barbecue and have fun. The Glen Iris neighborhood would normally have met on Labor Day, but they have delayed their meeting one week in order to, uh, be able to eat all that barbecue. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn.
Thank you, Madam Protem. The Wauhoma Neighborhood Association will have a virtual meeting Thursday, September second, at six PM. Uh, you can contact my office or the Department of Community Development to get information about that meeting. I also wanted to provide you guys an update. A couple of years ago, the city of Birmingham entered into a cooperative agreement with Mountain Brook and Homewood and Jefferson County to do, uh, improvements to the Hollywood Boulevard, um, bridge over Highway two-eighty. Uh, this is a part of the city that, you know, where the lines are kind of funky and, um, is bordered, the, the two-eighty corridor is city of Birmingham and Homewood, and Mountain Brook is on either side, but, um, just by way of a, a progress update, um, the, we've continued to work on that project, and, and it now appears that we're reaching, uh, a point where we can, um, put a contract out for bid, um, and the hopes are to have that project completed by next summer. Um, so, uh, I'll provide you guys further updates, but that, that's where we are currently. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn. And I would like to offer the D-seven comments at this time. I do want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues and congratulate each of you, as well as the mayor, on, uh, the wins on Tuesday. And I want to thank the residents of District Seven for the opportunity to serve again for four more years. Um, we did have experienced some loss in D-seven this week, and we had two very longtime residents of our community to, um, transition. And so that is Mrs. Louise Colley, she was a longtime D-seven resident. She was also former Secretary of the Tarpley City Neighborhood, and so we just want to express condolences to that family, as well as to the family of Mrs. Maddie Tarrant. I had the honor, my first resolution that I offered as a counselor was to commemorate Mrs. Tarrant's one-hundredth birthday, and she did pass away, uh, at the age of one-hundred-and-two last week. So again, uh, condolences to the Colley and Tarrant family. So that concludes the D-seven notes. I do have those for District Nine, if you will allow me. Counsel Hillyard wanted to wish Tuxedo Vice President Shirley Brown a happy birthday tomorrow on September first. The Assipco-Finley neighborhood will be having their meeting on Wednesday, September first, beginning at five-thirty PM at the First Baptist Church of Assipco. On Monday, September sixth, the Sherman Heights neighborhood meeting will begin at five-thirty PM at the Morning Star Baptist Church. There's also a meeting planned for the Central Pratt neighborhood at six PM at the House Sanford Park Rexxoner. And the District Nine Virtual Town Home Meeting, Town Hall Meeting, excuse me, will be tonight at seven-thirty PM. And if you want to join their town hall, that number is five-zero-eight-nine-two-four-one-three-four-nine. And Mr. Hillyard wants to remind us that it's District Nine time. Thank you all, councilors. Can we entertain a motion for our last item?
So move.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, if, if we have any public speakers, I know the president asked before, but we can entertain that if we have some speakers available, yes. Okay, sorry, thank you. A motion to entertain, suspend the rules? All those in favor?
All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Thank you.
All opposed.
I'm sorry, sir, thank you. If you state your name and your address, and you have three minutes, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, Kamau Africa, uh, Birmingham, Alabama. I want you all to particularly pay attention to this map, um, and you see the dots. On one side of town, there are fifty-three dots. On the west side of town, there are four, where there are three. The new updated map would show four. Um, I was hoping to stay at home and kind of be retired. Um, but Mayor Coleman Young said crime is the ultimate manifestation of economic exploitation. MLK said whites of goodwill have always deplored discrimination, but ignored the connection of economic exploitation and racism. Manly deeds, my fraternity brothers aren't here. The main ones I want to hear there is that not here. Four of my fraternity brothers are sitting, were sitting up here, and I'm really addressing two of them, or three. Manly deeds and love for all mankind are the aims. We hold every loft noble ideas and aims carrying out earth and heaven's grand commands. We swore no oath. All of you, all of you councilors, had a fiduciary obligation, a moral and ethical responsibility to govern with balance, and the mayor in particular. Brian K. Rice dot com, Brian K. Rice dot com shows all the evil, greedy scheme of depriving Enslie, Dolomite, Wyllum, Pratt City, business district, and property owners of the opportunity zone investment opportunities in terms of incentives for investors to come into those areas. We have had forty, over forty-five thousand hits on that site from the time we first did a pro, podcast. Um, blacks really simply cannot take anymore in our communities. We had three-hundred-and-sixty-five years of slavery to build seventeen trillion in wealth for America, a hundred years of Jim Crow, of humiliation and dehumanization. When my father came home from World War Two, he didn't have a GI Bill. That was generational wealth taken away. Twenty-six billion for four hu, for forty-one thousand miles in nineteen-fifty-six for the Highway Act that was intentionally driven through every black middle-class community, mine being one, Dynamite Hill, to destroy them. And I would, I would only say that, um, the last thing would be, in eighteen-sixty-two, there was something called the Homestead Act, where every white family that came to this country, before they even were citizens, if they were white or if they were citizens, they got a hundred-and-sixty acres of land for free. Mr. Josh Carpenter is responsible for the dots on this map when he drew the opportunities zone. He's a Rhodes Scholar, and he apologized and said he made a mistake and would go back to ask Governor Ivory, Ivy to amend the map and to expand it. Governor Ivy said, no. I asked, how was this a mistake? I really want to see some people in prison for this error, or, and along with the co-conspirators. Mayor Woodfin, no responsible leader will allow a new hire of any department to work without oversight, especially one over economic development and knowing that he was still on UAB's payroll. Was it naivety, benign neglect, or conspiracy? Environmentally, this city has been irresponsible. S-I-R-U-S Environmental Solutions dot com was sent to many of you all, and it had solutions in it. I asked Mr. Hillyard, Earl Head Junior, to arrange a meeting with me. I did talk with department heads. Serious Environmental Solutions dot com, that's S-I-R-U-S Environmental Solutions dot com. Was talking about helping stop the one million dollars in the landfill that, you remember I came here, Mrs. Abbott and Mr. Quinn, you agreed that one million dollars? If we, we have solutions that could resolve that, and say the city a million dollars per landfill, you have four mi, four landfills. Nothing was done, I never got that meeting. When you're talking about a recycling program, we're not doing anything. When you're talking about a citywide recycling program, it's only effective on South Side. And that's only because we have not educated the population, it's that simple. Um, and, and, and it's really sad, and so what I'm here asking is that somebody look at what has been going on in this city. We still have food deserts. That, that, uh, website talks about that also. I want you to really look at this. This is really evil. Fifty-five, this map came from the, uh, Birmingham Crane Watch. From twenty-seventeen to two thousand twenty-one, the Birmingham Business Journal, those dots right here are all on South Side and downtown. It's the same thing Mr. Bell did with the Tiff District. He ran it straight up Twentieth Street, and it was intended to benefit all of the communities. Enslie has a business district, Pratt has a business district. Dolomite and Wyllum have small business districts. It doesn't take much to satisfy some of our folks in my community, or the black community, because we've been accustomed to not getting anything for so long. You tell me how this was justified? How did the mayor be so irresponsible to allow this? How? Obviously, somebody in prison for that, I mean that. So I'm gonna ask the good white citizens of Birmingham and regular citizens to donate to this cash app, uh, cash app for us to get some money to help Brian Rice with his eight buildings in Enslie that have been left out, and you just gave, uh, the Zimmerman Group one-point-five million dollars. What about us? What about the black business owners and the, even some of the white guys that own businesses in En, in Enslie?
Right.
That now won't have that incentive? There are white business owners that, that own buildings there also, but Brian has eight of them. I felt his pain when I was sitting across from him in that podcast. And I just walked away because my, I wouldn't even have to be here. Don't have to be here. I cut my deal months ago and walked away. I'm still helping out in some instances, but mine was right in the opportunities on, it was there.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Williams?
Yeah, question, sir, gentlemen?
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let me know by saying aye, all opposed.
Thank you. Doing your job, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.